I call to order the Adrianian City Commission for May 19th, 2025. If everyone would please rise for our moment of silence and the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your very own political independence, your nation, our God. We have the same love, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor E.
President.
Commissioner Banking.
President.
Commissioner Miller.
President.
Commissioner Forts. Commissioner Roberts.
President.
Commissioner Castler.
President.
Commissioner Gals. Off Commissioner's presence, with the exception of Commissioner Forts.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Forts?
No, just work.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castler with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robert.
Yes.
Commissioner Castler.
Yes.
Commissioner Gals.
Yes.
Mayor E.
Yes.
Commissioner Banking.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion back.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sub move.
Or? We have a motion from Commissioner Banking with a second from Commissioner Castler. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banking.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Castler.
Yes.
Commissioner Gals.
Yes.
Mayor E.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we will have public comment regarding items on the agenda. We will start inside the city chambers first and remain exhausted. All public comment within the chamber will then open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the chambers now.
Towers, resident of the United States. Um, for one, um, it's not on the agenda, but it doesn't matter.
Yes, if it's not on the agenda, you can public comment at the end. The theory is public comment at the end, too.
Okay.
Here we go, public comment for items on the agenda. We will not open it up to the Zoom participants. Here we go, public comment for the Zoom participants for items on the agenda. We will move on to the informational discussion topics. And first up is the cell phone tower request. I will turn it over to our acting city administrator, Ben Simer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I believe online with us tonight, we have a utilities director say other to talk about this proposal that we received. Yeah, I'm here. Did you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Will.
Yep, so, um, real quick, several weeks ago, I had somebody contact me representing a company that builds cell towers, telecommunications towers, and they locate areas that they're interested in building. And in this case, they're interested in building one right near in the front yard area of the water treatment plant. Um, the first thing they do is they kind of go around and look for the areas that they think would work well for them. And in this case, that area that jumped out at them, they would need about 5,000 square feet of space, if I remember correctly. And they would build the tower and then they lease space on the tower to telecommunications providers. And in this particular case, I've heard that Verizon, they told me that Verizon has already contacted them about potentially putting their equipment on the tower. So I'm just curious to know if you're even interested in allowing that. Um, the first thing they do is they they get a lease agreement together. And in this case, it looks like what they would do is offer $120,000 upfront for a 50, five, I would, five zero year easement or lease on that space. Or they would pay starting out $600 a month for a five-year lease. And then they would have options to do nine more five-year leases. And every year, they would increase by one and a half percent per month. So obviously, if you felt they were going to be there for long term, that would probably be the way to go. But I'm just more looking for guidance from you on if you're even interested in allowing that to happen.
Well, if at any time that they decide that they are, you know, they're not going to do this lease anymore, is there something in what they provided saying that they will deconstruct the cell phone towers so that we're not stuck with it if that would happen?
Yeah, that's my understanding, but I haven't seen the lease yet. So I wouldn't know. We'd have to review that pretty carefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Will, just to clarify, this would be off of Ben's oak, um, the property there?
Yes, yeah, they're looking at the front yard completely, like the north. The north side of the front yard where that second drive is, is where people can go in and go fishing and there.
And do you foresee any future construction needs within that area? I'm assuming not such a great unit to us, but any future construction taking place, uh, out of the site I'm from?
No, I don't see anything. We have to make sure. I know that we do have a transition vein, the transmission vein that comes out the front there and that goes off in that direction. So we were going to have to make sure that we locate that, make sure we know where everything is on the ground. Some guys don't really even know until they even find stuff, but I don't see anything that's going to be constructed there. I already talked to Tim, the superintendent, and he agrees.
And do we have any other lease agreements with cell phone towers or more particular to this company?
I'll say that when we're out.
Do you happen to know as well, Will, if, um, there's anything, I mean, have you been in any discussion with them after they reached out to you? Um, the reason I'm asking is wondering, I know I've seen cell phone towers that have been disguised a little bit more with greenery. And I just, my only fear is that it's a very nice green space when you go by. And then to see a really ugly structure right there with cell phone yard.
Yeah, I agree.
And I wonder if there's any way of them just disguising it a little bit better. I've seen that done on other areas.
I have not had too many, just really just an initial meet and greet type situation where you kind of went through the process of how they approach it. They always want to identify the space and then give a lease agreement in place. And then they would go through all the proper planning and zoning processes. They have to get hold of FAA to get clearance because we do have an airport here in the county. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of steps to take after the lease.
Okay, thank you.
I do would be interested to see specifically where they want to go with that because there is a big chunk of property there. It might be nice to tuck it back away somewhere instead of being right up by the road.
Yeah, I agree. They only want, yeah, they want access from a road and they want access to power. But there's certainly access off the drive there, so.
From our city attorney's perspective with other municipalities that you represent, um, any concerns, uh, uh, in general with cell phone towers?
No. I mean, we had a problem back in the county, uh, 10, 15 years ago. Uh, there was a little bit of a argument over who owned what, but the important thing will be to spell out the lease.
Yeah, I'm fine with seeing as long as we wouldn't owe anything.
I think there's nothing wrong with investigating. I think we should look at it.
Yeah, I agree. I think the only way that we are approached and can bring in revenue for the city, we need to take a look at it. So I would like for you to pursue it for American and see where this could go.
I agree.
Yes, I agree too. I just would like to possibly look at possibly tucking it away or at least making it greener or somehow disguising it a little bit better.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I would want it farther away from the road as well, anyway. Okay.
How high was it going to be?
I believe you said it was 180 feet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Will. Yep, thank you.
And moving on, I think our city attorney, is that who's going to talk about Adrianian? No? Okay, all right. Acting administrator, do you come up with some ideas on that?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, just real quickly, um, there was some back and forth over the sale contract and some language that's been determined. We got that, um, middle of the day on Friday. Was that the bad thing going on out? So we will have that on for you next, uh, commissioning, uh, stick it together.
Moving on to our housing help of Lenaway discussion. Mayor, could we go into closed session to discuss the attorney's opinion about this? I have a motion, but a second?
I second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Castler with a second by Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castler.
Yes.
Commissioner Gals.
Yes.
Mayor E.
Yes.
Commissioner Banking.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will go into closed session and when we are done, we will come right down now at the Zoom meeting. Thank you. Recording stopped. We will now continue our informational.
Recording in progress.
Now, we will now continue our informational discussion topics. Moving on to number four, administrator search, the proposal from Yo and Yo. I'll hand it over to acting city administrator, Ben Simer.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of your packet, you have the proposed contract from Yo and Yo. Um, there's a resolution this evening to vote to approve or not approve the contract. Um, it's, the contract itself has several add-ons, uh, some of the training and features that were mentioned in previous discussions. Um, so we wanted to give space here for you to discuss which one of those you might be interested in. Um, and then once we vote on the contract, we can add those features in afterwards.
I think from the, um, contract itself, I was fine with all the components of it. Um, the interview portion, um, and I see that Amy Sell is on. Is she able to participate? Do we have questions directly for them? Or I thought she was.
No, I didn't think she was going to be on this evening, Commissioner.
It is her.
She? She's right there.
Okay.
Yes, I can, third question.
Okay, um, my, my question was specific to the interviews. I guess I'll, um, seek feedback from my fellow commissioners on the interview piece. Um, under this line, um, with the, with the interviews, is it just a come in? They sit down in front of us, we ask the questions, and then at the end of that, we make a decision? Or is there a community meet and greet, uh, opportunity for the candidates to interact with the public? And we get a chance to see how they can, um, you know, it act on the fly and interact with people as they ask questions for them in more of a casual type setting? I think it was Luddington that most recently did, uh, that as well. Um, so is, is that kind of part of this interview, these interview days?
Yes, there would be panel discussions, tours, a meet and greet, and consolidated feedback from those events that would be provided to the commission.
All right, fantastic. That is perfect. And then, um, just my, my feedback on, uh, starting on page six and seven, where it talks about, um, the strategic plan update. Uh, I think that was the, the feedback that I, I was interested in in terms of conversations that and questions that were going to be taking place with the stakeholders, um, kind of adding those extra questions. And then, uh, most importantly, the second from last item down on the bottom under the strategic plan project management, um, where there's the 18-month period where, um, Yo and Yo facilitates quarterly, those touch base, uh, meetings and piles those progress reports, uh, for the community and provides coaching for those task leaders. I think that is just critical when it comes to, um, making sure that the work that the commission defines, uh, those 15 goals, uh, items, then the 15 primary tasks, as I said, um, are appropriately project managed. Uh, so I, I have strong support for that.
One of the things that we had talked about previously, two simultaneous or in sequence with the, um, the search was developing a evaluation tool so that whoever we end up selecting, after all the candidates, would actually be able to see how they were going to be evaluated. So I think that's an important thing to make sure that we're including in the services.
Amy, on your, your, your city, brought us the evaluation tool. It was in the original package she's brought to us.
And I do know that there is some 360 analysis that was listed there. I see that, but I think the, the question becomes, are we comfortable with the tool that was shared the first time? And do we, are we familiar with the 360 approach? So I think that might be something to further discuss.
I think I'm concerned about the additional cost that would, um, be incurred by the city with all that was offered to us, which it, you know, is nice. I mean, the lease fee is $19,500, correct, Amy?
Correct.
Okay, and then all of the additional things, the strategic plan update, the project management, the competency plan development for the staff, the leadership training, the administrator review, strategic plan. I don't say now, but I'm not exactly sure what that means. And then the balance of the strategic plan, those are individually costs ranging from 1,500 all the way up to 15,000. Is that correct for each individual different one?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So the strategic plan update would cost us an additional 6,500. The strategic plan project management would be on top of that, another 9,500. Competency plan development for the staff is another 5,500. Um, and I'm just listing these out for those of you that didn't delve all the way to page 153 on the, on the report. Uh, the leadership training would cost another 15,000. The administrative review would cost another 1,500. Um, and I apologize, I don't know exactly what I meant by the strategic plan now was another 2,000. Um, the balance of the strategic plan was 4250. So those are some pretty significant costs to the city.
That was, that was when we discussed this, oh, when we sliced people the packet together for us to binder, those were listed in that order as extra expenses. I never understood those to be included in the search process. When we discussed, uh, Chief Emmerich coming on board as the administrator, that was one of the things that I pointed out that this, the, the cost of finding the administrators, A, and all those other extras that we wanted, the cost was B. So I, I fully expected those expenses in this contract based on what was in there, the binder.
You expected to pay the additional of all of those costs?
Only if we choose those items.
Correct, so I think the only thing I'm comfortable with voting on and voting a yes for tonight is the base fee of 19,500. I, I still, I, I guess I personally would need to know more information. Maybe the administrator review, although, you know, we have MML that can probably provide some of that. Um, there might be other opportunities. Uh, I think the rest of these things are pretty significant costs. And I think we need to, to really think about paying for any of these. I'm sure Yo and Yo is, you know, I love your presentation, very excellent, um, corporation. But let's just start with the base and let's go from there.
I, I think part of the feedback that we provided last time, and that's where your $2,000 now comes into play, is that we ask them to have and ask additional questions and bake those additional questions into the stakeholder interview. So, um, so part of this is integrated into that, uh, component and proposal, um, to move forward with strategic planning, which has been on hold for months at this point.
It's four or so year into our, the second year of our strategic plan and it hasn't, we haven't moved forward. I, I do think that, um, that I'm working with a new administrator to help with a strategic plan would be important.
I guess one of my questions, and Amy, maybe this is a question for you, but is this something where we could still, we could just do the administrator, sorry, administrator search, you know, at the end of our review minutes so that they can go hand in hand with the administrator search so they know what they're going to be reviewed on? Um, and then possibly just do that strategic plan update since we would be able to piggyback on that and get that savings of $2,000 basically from that original 6,250 on that strategic plan update? And at least get that much going and then figure out from there where we could go?
We can definitely do that. We can gather all the feedback we need and have the in-person meetings for the extra 2,000. And then we can re-scope out and dive into more details to put together, you know, additional options as well. So I think that's, we can, we can definitely be flexible to, to try to meet needs for, for cost of time.
I would just go back to, I felt that the last strategic plan was done on the chief and there wasn't a strategic plan management for it. I think this is an opportunity to, um, you know, invest money wisely with a consultant and then, um, to invest in our employees when it comes to leadership, uh, training and delivery with our department heads to really bring them together with the new administrator to work on, uh, improving their skills. Um, so that next go around, uh, we can, um, build our department heads to, um, have skills so that they could, uh, replace the city administrator.
So I guess I have a question, you know, maybe you can answer it. So, you know, it is on here for, you know, the resolution to, you know, approve an agreement with them. Did, so do we have to have that spelled out tonight exactly what that agreement is, correct?
Yes, and one of the things that I was going to recommend is I would like this subject to file approval of the city attorney. Um, because what's provided is more of a term sheet than it is a contract or things that I would add in. Um, I would exactly go break the deal. It's just, I would be very clear on what you're selecting and that you're getting what you pay for in the contract. So with that being said, I know I participated in an interview with Yo and Yo today. So they're doing services before they have a contract, um, which is good for them. Um, but I also know that they're trying to stay on schedule for us to complete those interviews on the 14th, 15th as well.
Well, I believe we can, uh, vote to allow our city attorney to go into contract negotiations for specific things like the base fee. And if we want to put in the extra $2,000 for the strategic plan questions, then the rest is, the rest of the items are, are not on the table at this time, correct?
That is exactly what I was asking for. But this would not need to come back before you, once you pick what services you want, then the final document will be created, just those services. And then we can have an addendum with the optional services. And if you choose to do that at a future meeting, you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And with regard to the leadership training, I think that's something that we should wait until we have a new administrator and let them participate, whoever that is, to participate in discussion of the leadership training.
Alongside, yeah.
So we have the recruitment costs at 19,500, right? And then when they are doing the stakeholder, um, questions, getting that input, they will also get, um, strategic plan input. That's 62, 6,250 hours.
Well, it's only 2,000 for the questions to be, the balance of it would be 4,250. If we wanted them to continue on the strategic plan, it would be.
Okay.
So, so now we're saying we're going to pay $2,000, but we're not even going to be sure if we're going to use those answers? Are we wasting the $2,000?
Well, they would come to us and we can then choose if we want to use this company to help us with the strategic plan.
I just think we're talking about pennies.
No, it's not pennies.
I, I do believe that, I'm not sure about the, I would like to negotiate maybe the strategic plan project management. But I do believe that the 6,250 for a strategic plan update is necessary with the new administrator coming in. So getting the feedback from stakeholders, probably administrator, getting the feedback from stakeholders about a strategic plan, um, and implement, rolling that out together, I think is what will be, it just makes everything smooth moving forward.
I agree. I think that piggybacking, getting a new administrator and moving into strategic plan work is exactly the right time. We should do that.
And that was one of the reasons I was asking if we could break it out because I also agree. I really think if you were to do, you know, not just the search, but the city administrator interview and the strategic plan update, they can all go together as that city administrator, that new city administrator comes in. But then, I, I agree, Commissioner Banking, that that project management, you know, is something that we really need to do. But I think that's something after we get the, that administrator here, let's, let's, as we, let's get into the search. Let's get the search going. That was my opinion. And then let's look at these other things. I think they're all valuable. I think the strategic plan project management, the leadership training, all of that is very valuable. And, um, but, you know, just to reassess and look at, you know, where our finances are and what is the highest priority? And maybe what that city administrator is really focused on and, you know, has that priority as well. But at least get that strategic plan update since we are so far behind. I agree with that. I'm not saying nix it. I just said put it on hold until we can figure out where we're going. That, that was my thought.
Is it something that we can, uh, Mrs. Sell, is it something that we can do, the strategic plan and the, um, administrator? And then once that comes together, we can? I, I'm a little confused on the competency plan development. That the, is it, can we, after we paid for the, the administrator, we get the strategic plan down and we see what we need, um, outside of here? And there's a competency plan from you, but are we able to process that ourselves? And then say, and with our new administrator and our strategic plan say, it says we need, um, leadership training, et cetera. Is that something we could do outside of that or does that not?
Yes.
Okay.
I do think that.
Does it affect the streamlining of that, those processes? Is that, does it make it a lot more difficult? Does it, um?
None.
Sorry, please go ahead.
Sorry, um, the only piece that makes sense to do together is that intake piece. Everything else can be.
Everything else can be done at different points in time. I did want to give you all an understanding of what those items, the costs would be, but they can definitely, the timeline, they can definitely be pushed out. All this discussion around timing, yeah, it makes a lot of sense to me and I'm very flexible on, on when we would implement different components.
So we, I would like to see that the administrator outreach done and the strategic plan update done together and allow the city attorney to negotiate that and the city administrator to sign that. Does that, so it doesn't have to come back forth, we can keep the momentum moving, we're not stopping progress that's already happening?
So then when we go through the process of selecting a candidate, we'll say we may or may not be doing administrative training and we may or may not have project management for the strategic plan in place?
Correct. We don't know who we're going to get, what if they already have those, a strong set of skills in those things?
And I think as, we are their client and we are presently, will be presently working with them on all their components and we can add things as we go. We are one of the, we are their client. Well, I understand they're our client, but I see this as a form of setting the expectation for our new incoming administrator and what tasks they'll be required to do and that will be required to participate in having someone project manage the strategic plan and have someone provide leadership training for them and the department heads.
I, I guess I think that's part of the job, is project management, so the strategic plan, making sure all the pieces on the chessboard are levied for the city.
Well, then, then it'll be levied and affected, so the last go around.
I, I just think that we look for, look for the opportunity that comes and where we, where there are gaps. You know, in interviews, if they say, I'm, I have very strong project management, I could use leadership, you know, leadership training for my team is what, is something that I look forward to having come in, like someone come in to do that, I think we set that up at that time. We allow our new administrator to choose what is best for the city at that time. We don't know what their strengths will be or their weaknesses, et cetera. And a good administrator will tell you what their strengths are and will tell you what their weaknesses. Those are the questions that they get asked.
And by then also we'll have some time to work with Yo and Yo and build our competence level with them. There may be other groups or organizations that can do leadership training as well. So I agree with Commissioner Cansbury, let's get, let's get the administrator in place and let them participate, as I said before, participate in the decision on how we're going to do leadership training. It's going to be, it's going to be the administrator staff that's going to be trained along here or she. So, you know, that's our, what I'm thinking.
I would agree, we want to move the process, continue to move the process along. I don't want to rush it, but I do want to keep moving this process along. I think this is one of the steps that we can take right now to say this is, this is the two or three things we want right now to get, get this thing moving. And I think it's important for us to do that as a group, to make a decision and make some choices.
So I'm just going to ask to clarify, so what I'm hearing is, that when we get to that agreement part, and obviously the administrator recruitment, the search process, but also, you know, is this something, because we'll need to specify that, correct? Yes, that's what I thought. You know, is the, what about the annual review? I haven't heard as much about that. Are we, or yes? Okay, making sure, and then, and are we saying just to do the 2,000 towards the strategic plan update or actually do the strategic plan update?
I, I think we need to actually do the strategic.
That's my opinion, but I'm just asking what I'm hearing to make sure.
I think so too.
I think it goes hand in hand. I think those set the expectations of what we're looking for. We're going to get constituent input for that while we, you know, we're doing the administrator search, getting constituent input on that. And we'll get the strategic plan input at the same time. Setting up the strategic plan helps set the expectations for the administrator.
I can compromise. I know we didn't want all of that funding. So it looks like it'd be 27,250 for the strategic plan plus the administrator review plus the search.
Yes.
Yes. I'm funny, my math could be wrong, so. Are there any other items, commissioners, that you need to discuss or information? All right. Very none, may I get a motion to adopt consent agenda?
So moved.
Move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cansbury with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call please.
Commissioner Gaus?
Yes.
Mayor Eath?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkie?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Cansbury?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to our regular agenda, under resolutions, we have a resolution R25-028 from the city commission. It is a resolution to appoint April Hammond as city clerk. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Scored.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion?
Just feedback from the commissioners on the interview committee, both in support of this, and April was not the person that was late in applying for it.
That is correct. Hearing our questions or discussion, we have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Cansbury. Roll call please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Cansbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus?
No.
Mayor Eath?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkie?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution R25-029 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve an agreement with Yo and Yo, HR Advisory Solutions, for the administrator search recruitment component, the strategic plan update component, and the annual review component. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mayor, did you say approve or did you say negotiate?
Oh, with, under, with, what do you want me to state it? With final approval from our city attorney? May I get a motion to adopt?
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on that?
No. Thank you, Amy, for working with us and sharing more information again.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cansbury with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call please.
Mayor Eath?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkie?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Cansbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution R25-030 is from Engineering Services. It is a resolution to approve an agreement with Consumers Energy for utility relocation at the P O R Center. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? So moved. Scored. Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on that? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Cansbury. Roll call please.
Mayor Eath?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkie?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Cansbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Resolution R25-031 from administration. It is a resolution to approve an agreement with Housing House of Laneway. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mayor, I move to table that resolution to our experience.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Six.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this? We have a motion to table Resolution R25-031. The motion was from Commissioner Gaus with a second from Commissioner Cansbury. Roll call please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Cansbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus?
Yes.
Mayor Eath?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkie?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? At this time, we'll not have public comment. This is general public comment, does not have to relate to what was on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute timeline limit and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment within side of the chambers, we will then open it out to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Di Francesco. I reside in Glen County. I managed, I am here on behalf of Medellin Management for Riverview Terrace. I managed Riverview Terrace from January of 2009 through April of 2017. I have been asked to come and help with this property to lease it up again. So we've had some challenges, some of the challenges being that the majority of the units are now 50% instead of 60% units. Currently, we have 73 units available at the 50% AMI and 10 units available at the 60% AMI. There are minimum income requirements to qualify in order to be able to pay the rental amounts. For a studio, it is 728. For a 50% one-bedroom, it is 780. And for a 60%, it is 891 for the rental rates. The minimum rental amounts, or the minimum income amounts, I'm sorry, to qualify to move in at this time are 23,400 for a 50% and for a 60% unit, 26,730. So you can see with Mishtha implementing a lot more of the 50% than the 60%, the challenges are really out there for us. We are holding open houses and we are advertising in the Laneway Voice and on WLEN, we have a slot coming open for our open house that is coming Thursday, June 12th, from 5 to 7. We've had one open house thus far and are going to continue to have open houses every two, three weeks of every month until we get full. So we are only at about 50% occupancy at this time. We have flyers to show as well as with the open houses and the advertising that we are doing, there's also flyers everywhere and signage on the property. So we are working diligently to fill it, but there has been some challenges. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Buns.
Thank you, Greg, three more?
Yes. Just state your name and, and who you're with.
Yeah, my name is Scott Buns. I'm with Medellin Management. I worked with many of you through the process when the building went down. And through the process of getting a pilot approved and a service agreement approved. And I guess I would add, what my ask is to take a look at, not the pilot per se because it goes based on the revenue, but the service agreement that's due, I think, the end of June. I'm just being honest, I don't know whether we want the funds to pay that. Being at 50% occupied, the development's not generating enough cash at this point. We just started leasing the end of '24. And I think that the ordinance, it gives a little leeway there as to when that service agreement's actually going to start. So I don't know, maybe that's a question for the city attorney to look at or the mayor for that matter. And if I could follow up with somebody and have a little bit of dialogue, I just don't want to not be able to say, I don't know, just being a little bit honest with the council. So, thank you. The other thing is, if it helps or if it doesn't help, we also went to Mishtha and they kept our mortgage. So we don't have a mortgage until January 1st on development. So they're, because of where it's at, 50% occupancy. So, thank you.
Town Hall, Haver, 419 Budlong Street. The city's doing a lot of things that are really good, really are, pretty emulation by other communities, but I'm very concerned about some big issues here. Number one, the water issue here. I don't know what's being done around here, this water is worse than we've seen some third world nations, and I've been there. I taste the water in third world, third world nations, it's just terrible. I'm not saying it's not safe. The smell and the taste is horrible. There's a competition for worse municipal water, we'd be in a thick of it, I guarantee it. And we're in the process of searching for a city administrator and I still like the idea of Chief Amrich. I, I think he'd be an outstanding pick and I don't, but it is what it is. Another problem is the marijuana laws. I hear about this because I was a city commissioner when the marijuana was approved in the city in 2017, 18, whatever it was. And it would come up to me and say, you know, you guys brought that in here and the deal when they came in here was that the orders would be contained within the facilities. I'm not sure all the orders I smell around the city are from the facilities because I don't use the stuff, but I'll tell you what, I think even people, somebody sitting on a corner smoking it, it's much more potent than it was many years ago. And that's an issue. And then another problem is a lot of issue here, it's, to me, it's getting worse. We're not doing a good job with the code enforcement, it was disgusting. I got a place up the street from my apartment building, it's just absolutely unbelievable. Some of the stuff I see around here, and, oh, seven, eight years ago, I went around the entire city, it took us weeks to do it myself and a gentleman from a prominent family in the city. We found 700 or some properties that had rudely apparent exterior issues. We had like a two or three second rule, we didn't see something in a couple of seconds, we moved on. It was a laborious task. He drove my role and a former commissioner was just talking to me, he said he did the same thing with the same gentleman they found. I'm not even sound, so I don't know how scientific comparison that is, but that's an ongoing issue here and we're tearing down houses and people seem happy about it and we're losing our population base and thus our revenue base. We've got to do something to stop the decline of our housing stock here. It's, it's getting worse, I think. We're not getting a job done with the people we've got in this code enforcement area. I'm not seeing, there's, there's a couple of good people there that I've talked to and I deal with, but I'm on the phone all the time with these people, I'm tired of it. I got a lot of money invested in this town. I mean, Doc, if I'm going to sit here and watch it all, with their way because the city's declining with its housing stock and there's a lot of good people here, they're keeping their homes up nicely and deserve this, they're losing value on their homes because of the people around them. So I just ask for something to be done, first of all, about the water, that's the most pressing issue we've got right now. I wonder what's being done, I hear nothing about it. I'm not in the inter-sigils anymore in government, so I don't know, there might be a lot going on, I don't realize, but I hope something's done about it because you get two or three finalists who come here and their families come, they drink the water and that's a bad impression, so, and the other things I mentioned, so, thank you.
Keith Miller, City of Aiden. As far as taxpayers around here, I'm sure they don't like to be liked to from the city county. And I have it here in my, from the Laneway Voice. You guys told us with $800,000 to tear down the Hagerman and get rid of it, asbestos ban, and they cleaned it. It comes up to $226,000 and some change. So we sold a million dollars worth of property for $250,000. Sounds fair to me. I mean, knowing people that got struck here was the city taxpayers. And as far as Riverview Terrace, I think you guys owe us a million dollars before you ask for anything else from us. And as far as Riverview Terrace, I think you guys owe us a million dollars before you ask for anything else from us. We're the ones that paid for that building just to keep your residents in the city that you guys didn't take care of your building. It's your fault and we're in this big problem. But nobody wants to put a finger to the, who's ever, who's ever caused this problem. If you guys would have took care of your-
Mr. Miller, address the commission. Not that.
Right, if they had took care of their property, we wouldn't be in this problem. And as far as that backroom meeting, every time you guys go into a backroom meeting, us citizens, us taxpayers, take it. You went into a backroom meeting a few months ago, give a guy $125,000 for a property that you already paid him $75,000 for. What did it cost us when you went back there to make? I didn't see anybody bringing up what you, that housing help was going to cost us. Is it an embarrassment that you're not going to tell us what it costs? That money's not your money, it's our money. And this address, the other one, Commissioner Schwartz has not been here in months. I realize he's sick, but he's not doing the constituents that voted for him any good by not being here. Somebody needs to fill that seat to take his place. I don't care if you find somebody temporary, but that vacant seat right there is a vote that the citizens are not taking. You might not agree with me, you might agree with me, but that's how I feel. Thank you.
Hearing, hearing no more public comment, inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants.
Hi, I'd like to speak real quick. Jared Tim, major resident. Um, first, I'd like to thank Vince Emmerich and Bob Benke for responding to the email that I sent you guys, uh, last week about the demolition of U Park. Um, and I would just like to make a really quick, publicly, to stop, pause, whatever you have to do, the destruction of U Park until the, um, the concerns that I raised get emailed, um, are addressed, um, and, and reason this in the bottom of whether or not, you know, due diligence was taken before a park was stripped from the public without so much as a public comment. Thank you.
Hearing, hearing no more public comment, we will move on to the commissioner comments. I would like, oh, I'm sorry. I would like to begin and just acknowledge that we have lost several citizens recently in Adrian that, you know, did a lot for our community. One being Victoron, which was the former sheriff, but also Dorothy Schmidt. She, you know, came diligently to our meetings, cared a lot about our community, was a big activist here and just did a lot for the community and, you know, was an active part of our city commission meetings. And it is a very large loss, um, you know, losing these community numbers and just what they, their value and what they do bring. And even though sometimes it might have been controversial, you know, topics, at least, you know, it was keeping us on our toes and it was bringing light to the problems that were in our community. And I just want to acknowledge, acknowledge them. I also want to just, um, bring up that today I was able to attend the, um, sergeant, staff sergeant at Ralph Moir's memorial that happened at Oakwood Cemetery and just really thank, um, our parks and recreation department. They came out in full force today to honor and just what the cemetery did to also, you know, really make it a very special moment. If you don't know the story, it is, it has been posted around town, but it was through Waggy Finger Home that did do the obituary. But there were remains of a World War II, a person that was shot down in Germany. Those remains were had now been found, even though they knew that they were shot down in Germany. That family knew that, that he had perished. They were just identified recently and, um, he and his son is buried in Oakwood Cemetery. So it was decided to bring the remains to Langston here at Oakwood Cemetery. And just to see the show of veterans that came out today, but like I said, just the Parks and Recreation Department. And it was just an amazing day. It was, um, you know, it was just amazing to know that somebody had been found this many years later, old remains, and that they were identified. But what an honor and privilege that, you know, it was chosen for, for him to be laid arrest in Oakwood Cemetery next to his son. So I just want to, um, bring that to light. Um, and that was a very great day. And thank you to our, especially to our cemetery department for what they did. I have several items tonight, as usual. So on Saturday, we had the Habitat for Humanity Pickleball Tournament out at Heritage Park. I'd like to thank Jeremiah Davies for coming out and, um, making sure that everything was okay with the tournament. The funds raised from that tournament goes direct, go directly back to City of Adrian residents to help with, uh, projects in their homes. So please, if you have need and you need the income requirements or you're not even sure, just please reach out to Habitat because they do have funds to help with things like ramps and, and roofs and plumbing and all of that stuff. Um, also, we have some really interesting things happen on Saturday with our new community garden down on George Street. Um, that was also a big assist from Braxton Garza. Braxton Garza, who created the raised garden beds from our parks and rec. Jeremiah was instrumental in that. Our Parks and Rec Department was, um, you know, a big part of that and we really appreciate it. We also look at our first section of yoga and yoga in the park. Um, so I could not attend that even though I wanted to since I was at the pickleball tournament, but it will be taking place at a different park each month. So please check the City Parks and Rec Department website, Facebook for the next yoga in the park. So great ideas, moving forward with all those things. Then on Sunday, we had the race, the Sigma, Greg Adams' race, the Sigma race. We had 600 registrants, which is more than we had, I believe, since COVID. So that was wonderful. Um, I'd like to thank Jay and his assistants with getting the farmer's market ready for us. Um, the Adrian Police Department reserves that came and helped with traffic control. It was a great morning for a race and everyone had a wonderful time. Funds for that obviously go to Community Mental Health, which helps support all the programs within the City of Adrian and the county. Um, on Thursday, we had our first, Thursday, Thursday's evening. I came down for a gentleman. I can get to hear the ladies singing at, at the four corners. We had a gentleman singing, we had this section closed off, we had a bunch of food trucks. It, it wasn't especially well attended, but it was beaten first time. I thought it was a good shot and we're going to continue doing that in DDA. So good job, Kate. Um, we're looking forward to our next one. There are various items I placed on the stand. One is if you're interested in the Bicentennial 5K Run, one mile walk, you can take this with QR code, get registered. It's only $5. Please consider registering. It's all on the Kiwanis Trail. So that would be, um, those are up there with other things. If you have a chance to review the packet, one of the things in there from Will Sadler, our wastewater treatment plant director, um, that's how this is, I can't think of it.
Utilities director.
Thank you. Uh, utilities director. He gave us pictures of outside and inside the water tank like I've never seen before. And so I, I was just, I thought they were really cool. If you find those things interesting and geek out on it, take a look at the packet. They're, they're in there. Um, it shows things that need to be looked at and a lot of things that don't need to be looked at. So, um, that was really cool. Uh, I'd like to hear from Mr. Castelbury. I believe I heard earlier, just in passing, you have a number of code enforcement hearings, uh, coming up. Could you tell us how many, approximately how many hearings you have in a week, in a month?
Last month, we had, it was either 61 or 63. And tomorrow, um, they double booked Mr. Corr. So the City of Adrian has hearings from 1:00 to 4:30, all in both courts, all afternoon.
So we are writing the tickets. We are, there are a lot of tickets, there are a lot of tickets. And we are taking them to court for those people that are not, um, doing what they used to do to be good neighbors. And we are doing our due diligence as best as we can. So I'm going to leave that there. The last thing, I would like to welcome and thank April for, uh, your willingness to step forward. April's been a several-year member of the City of Adrian. I'm sorry if I was going, if you were going to be doing this or not, okay. Um, I was on the committee to interview. Um, she was also a member of the Raisin Township, um, clerk office for many, many years and brings good, very, very, very good customer service skills and organizational skills. And I look forward to working more closely with you. May I get a motion to adjourn?